I will call the October 17, 2022, meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting consistent with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. The public may attend in person or electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. I will call the role. Maria Madonick? Sarah Beth Delpree, not present at the moment. Dr. Jay Daya?
Present.
Present remotely. Brooke Hopkins?
Present.
Jeff Hughes?
Present.
Stephen Lawrence?
Present.
Mike Strambler?
Present.
Erin Williamson?
Present remotely.
Present remotely, and I'm Lynn Piasak, and I am present. Staff in attendance this evening include Ms. Christine Syriak, interim superintendent, Ms. Donna Koonin, Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Carrie Borcherting, Director of Special Services, Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal, and remotely, Mr. James Sapia, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. I will ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and I will note for the record, Marcia, that Ms. Delpree has arrived 7:05 PM. I'll give you a minute, Sarah Beth, because we're up to correspondence. I don't think there's any, is there? Okay, so there's no correspondence this evening. We'll move on to public comment. If you are remote and you have public comment, would you please raise your hand in the participants' list? I don't see any. I don't either. I don't see any, Maria doesn't see any, so we'll move on to the PTO update. A written report from PTO can be found in Board Book. I encourage the public to access the report to see a listing of all the amazing things that the PTO plans to support the school district. Ruchi is not with us this evening, but she did send me an email and ask to just let the public know that we are all very excited that the Halloween Hoop will be returning to an in-person event after two years, and I know that there is excitement in the air in Woodbridge, Connecticut because of that. I happen to be at a meeting at, actually, the Senior Center this afternoon, and believe it or not, they were talking about the Halloween Hoop, so the community is a Twitter over the event, so we look forward to that. It will be held on Saturday, October 22, with the rain date Sunday, October 23, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And again, I encourage everyone to read all of the PTO highlights that are in Board Book. Moving on to number two on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The minutes from the September 19 regular meeting are included in this evening's Consent Agenda along with a budget narrative, a budget summary, the detailed financial report, and the combining financial statements. Also included in the Consent Agenda this evening is the Acceptance of Policy 2120 Organizational Chart and Policy 4111: Recruitment and Selection of Administrative Staff Regulations for 30-Day Review. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Lynn, I have a quick question.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Hi, Lynn.
Do I have a second? Maria Madonick made the motion, Brooke Hopkins seconded the motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Lynn, are you able to hear us?
You're not able to hear us.
Okay, Jay has a question.
Oh, there's a question.
Question? Go ahead, Erin, sorry.
No, it's Jay, he just wasn't screaming as loud as I can.
Okay.
Lynn, I have a minor typo in the last meeting, so I was in person, not remote, so I can arrange that with Marcia to make the amendment.
Perfect, so we'll accept those minutes with the correction that... Can you make that motion to accept the minutes with the correction of Jay being in person?
Sure, so I move to approve the Consent Agenda with the correction that Jay Daya attended in person.
And Brooke, will you second that? Okay, so I have a motion by Maria, seconded by Brooke. Now we'll do all in favor. It's unanimous, Marcia, thank you very much. We're on to number three on the agenda, reports. Superintendent Report, Ms. Syriak?
Thank you.
I'll mute. Maybe.
Thank you. This evening...
That's nice. Sorry, go ahead.
So this evening, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that once again in your board packet is the enrollment report for the current month. It is dated as of October 1. October 1 is a very important date when we collect enrollment in school districts because it's what the Connecticut State Department of Education uses as a guide for the entire school year. So we really work very hard to make sure that our enrollment data is as accurate as possible on that particular date. And really, with the new state system, it's very difficult to not have accurate data because they now have checks and balances in place where two districts are no longer able to report the same student, so you really do get notified if you have any crossovers. And I just want to take a moment to thank Marcia DiGennaro. She takes care of this for us in Woodbridge. It is a huge undertaking, it is a very large task, and I appreciate everything she does in regard to PSIS for the district. The next thing that I would like to do is I would like to introduce and call up Carrie Borcherting, the Director of Special Services, as she's going to provide the board with the presentation, and then I will have a few more comments after the presentation.
Great, thank you. So I'm just going to provide a few updates to where things are right now, and if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Is it now? Great, okay. So our current special ed numbers right now are 117. This is as of October 10, and we've had, so far this school year, so since August, we've had 36 PPT meetings. These could be anything from an annual review to a triennial evaluation or a new referral to special education. So since July, when I started, we have had six referrals to special education. These are both family referrals and school referrals. We've also had some that were already in process from the previous school year, so either a referral made at the end of last school year or one that had asked to move forward into the fall. So those didn't count in the numbers made since July 1, but July 1 is our switch-over time. So, so far, we've had four eligible, they were all pre-K. Pre-K is based on birth dates when students turn three, which is a little different than when a student is just enrolled within the school district, and then... Yes. I can try. Am I there? Sorry about that. And then we've had four PPTs that are either students who were determined to not be eligible for services or the team decided not to move forward with evaluation. And then we have six students right now that are currently under the process of evaluating. So at this time, the special education services that we're, that we have here are academic, social-emotional support, OTPT, speech and language, and behavioral support. We have the 12 special education teachers. Four are in more specialized programs that I'll talk about in just a minute. We have one person that has a focus on literacy, and then also a pre-K teacher out of that group. We also have five mental health providers. You'll see that three are full-time and two are part-time. And then same with speech and language pathologists, we have two full-time and one part-time, a full-time occupational therapist, and a physical therapist who is here one day a week. And then we do have some students who receive hearing revision services from different outside consultants or groups like Besby, which is for students with a visual impairment, who come into the building and help provide those services. So right now, our types of how we are splitting up caseloads for staff and for students, there's a resource teacher for K-1, 2, then another for grade 2, 3, another splits 3, 4, a grade 5, a grade 6, and then there is somebody who focuses specifically on reading for students who have a diagnosis of dyslexia, and another teacher who focuses in the grades 4, 5, and 6 on students who don't quite fit into a specialized program, but they need some additional academic support throughout their day that covers more of their day than just a typical in and out of a resource room for a bit of time. So our students with... Sorry, one second. Our students within a typical resource setting would be students more likely to have a diagnosis of something like a learning disability or perhaps ADHD. They may receive a little bit of support through their day or some counseling support or speech and language support, but not typically requiring more adult support such as a paraprofessional within their day. So there could be a pull-out in small group, or there could be push-in services depending on what the student needs, but the majority of their day would be spent with their typical Then we have two other types of classrooms. We have class for students with some social and emotional needs. We run two different levels for this, and one class is grade K to 3, and the other is 4 to 6, and that's how it's split up. They may or may not have other academic concerns, but it's kind of a home-based place to come back to, so if something's happening during the day and they need some, a quiet space or somewhere to decompress or to meet with the mental health provider, they have that space to come to. They also have a lot of opportunities for social skills and role-playing in practice with their, with both typical peers and with their other classmates, so they can work on some of those social connections. And many of these students do require more paraprofessional support throughout their Students with the life skill needs would be students who have more, a more involved disability or multiple disabilities. They could have a mix of academic and behavioral needs. Many of these students do require a significant amount of support throughout the day. It could be from things such as daily living skills like feeding or using the restroom all the way to having a supporting class to help break down activities depending on what's happening within the typical classroom. Also, these students tend to have a lot more related services, so the OT, the PT, speech and language, all combined together. Another thing I wanted to highlight quickly was that we received a grant last year, and it ends this year, for funding for extra tutoring for dyslexia. This is not tutoring that's required by an IEP, but it is extra funding that we received in order to work with a small number of students. So based on evaluations that were completed from the district, such as like STAR assessment and where a student is, based on where a student is in their program, like SANDE, which is the multisensory program that we use here for a number of students, kind of an Orton-Gillingham approach. So we are starting this back up. Today was the first day, I believe, of that session, and it will run another session again after the holiday, at which time the grant, I think, is... I don't, I don't believe they're doing this grant again for the next two years. But this group of students are mostly in the red or the yellow for the STAR assessment, and they require just like a little bit extra we can offer through this funding, another opportunity to do the SANDE after school. So this is on top of what they're already getting within their school day, it's just that additional to help move forward. And then the last thing I wanted to share was the paraprofessional training. This year, there is a requirement of 18 hours of paraprofessional training. This can be through things that we're doing within the building, either our own staff meetings that we're having or our back-to-school days that we had. It could be PMT training, which is going to happen again this week, so making sure that we've taught everyone good de-escalation strategies. We're also working to try to find a time that we can have more consistent meetings with our paraprofessionals, because it is one group where they don't always stay the longer hours that teachers stay on some of the teacher days, so we're trying to figure out the best way to build in some time that they can get some extra training. The 18 hours are covered with the amount of time that we have in the school year, but just trying to find good opportunities for us to get everyone together to hear the same message is really important. One thing we are using this year is master teacher. This was something that Cheryl had looked at doing before she left, and the other districts in Boa are also using it. So I'm attending meetings with the other Boa directors, and we are trying to collaborate around making things consistent across, across all of us. And this master teacher program is basically an online professional development program where staff have options to go through modules about either certain disabilities, about inclusion, about training on behavior, and we can customize things to the needs of certain pairs based on what role they're currently playing, or some that we've decided just everyone should have. So that is something that we have for the next two years that we'll be working with as well. And that is the end of my presentation. You're welcome.
Lynn, can someone unmute?
Do I need to mute while you guys...
So for those of you out in the public that just watched my mouth move, I thanked Carrie for her very excellent and comprehensive presentation on the special services programming, and I told her that we were going to have a little question and comment, period. So our first person I've called on is Maria. So do you want to use...
Please.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. Carrie, thank you so much for the presentation. I had a question. I know you said the grant expires for the SANDE program. Is that something that you see being beneficial down the road? Are there other grants that could possibly fund that?
This one just, this one just focuses on the dyslexia tutoring, and I suspect that because dyslexia has kind of had a revision in how we identify students, that just happened over the summer. So if a student who is identified as a student with a reading disability and it's under dyslexia, there are some other requirements. I would suspect there might be some other grants coming, just because it seems to be a very popular area right now. It is extra, so right now, one of our focuses is looking at what does a student require during the school day, and if they require four days a week of SANDE instruction to work on some of those phonological skills, then that's what we would offer. So I think it's great that we have it as a bonus, and perhaps if it's an option at some point, but students aren't missing something from what they're, what they're needing during their school day.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sarah Beth, any questions?
I was just curious how the numbers compared to last year, if you have that review.
So I don't have, I didn't do a comparison, but I can do that for the next meeting if you want. I will say that I did have to go back and forth a little bit with, you know, students moving in and out of districts, and we're rolling over to a new IEP system, so there have been some tricky pieces with that where a student was in one system and now it didn't code the same way in the new system, so I didn't, I didn't go back and look, but I can, I'd be happy to look for that information.
If you, if you do that, can you also break down just like per grade, what, where the numbers lie?
Mm-hmm.
No, thank you.
Jay, do you have any questions or comments this evening?
Thanks, Carrie. My two questions were, I think, answered. Maria and Sarah Beth both took care of the...
I'm sorry, I can't hear any of it.
Hang on, I'm going to turn up the mic. Go ahead, go ahead, Jay.
The two questions I had, Maria took care of the first one, Sarah Beth took care of the second one. So it'd be great to see the time series and see how that's increased over time, and if you could give us a costing per capita or some sort of indication on how much costs have increased in this area, that would be very, very helpful.
I caught the beginning was what you had asked for, but then it was cost?
Could you repeat that, Jay?
Sure, I don't know, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I was asking about cost per capita, cost per student, over time.
Cost per student.
How they've increased or decreased over time on the number of students.
I can, I can get something probably close to it. I mean, it somewhat changes with every group of students that come in and out, right? Because some students have more needs than others, and so that does change things in terms of what the budget looks like, but I will, I can look at that.
No, see, given you've got 100 students, that would average out over time, so I wouldn't really be too worried about that. I would just want to know some average number over time to see what it is per capita as a fraction of our budget and also as a total cost.
Jay, Christine is going to comment on that question as well.
So we, Donna and I are also putting together the numbers for that, so in a separate presentation, we will share further information in regard to special education, the numbers increasing over the years, student numbers as well as financial numbers, et cetera. So we are putting that information together as well, and we'll probably have it for the next finance committee meeting, and then we can bring it forward to the board meeting after that.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Is that good for you, Jay? Perfect. Jeff?
Thanks for the presentation, Carrie, no further questions.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Carrie. I just had one question with regard to the social-emotional concerns and the life skills concerns. Is there specific programming or approaches that we're using here for those students? So we have responsive classroom at the universal kind of tier-one level, but how are we, are there any particular approaches or programs, evidence-based strategies that we're using for that other tier, tier two, tier three?
So for the classroom, we still can, I mean, we're still utilizing responsive classrooms, that's across the district. It will really depend on students' IEPs in terms of what their particular needs are. There are some students with very specific behavior plans that we work through, and we have a BCBA also who works through that as well with us. One thing with both classrooms really that I've started to talk to teachers about is really finding a curriculum that will work for them too, especially as students come in and out of the classroom, making sure that we're still meeting the standards, but also making sure the curriculum's age-appropriate and following what the student needs. In terms of social skills, I know that they're using everyday speech is one curriculum that both our speech pathologists and our mental health team, our wellness team, are using. We also have some people that are using Michelle Garcia-Winters' social thinking curriculum, and so that's another one. It kind of depends, again, on the student and what the needs are, but there, there are small groups, social skill groups, and then whole-class social skill activities as appropriate, so making sure that the right grade levels are matched together for those activities.
Thank you, Carrie. That's excellent. Two questions I have. One, the PPTs you mentioned, I know those were new this year, the onboarding. How has that been? A nightmare, or is it time-consuming? How, I mean...
PPTs are a lot of time I would like to spend, and I'm trying to figure out how to spend more time in the classroom, seeing kids and not running PPTs, and we have some ideas on how to accommodate that a little bit with, with staff that we have, so some meetings may be picked up by a school psychologist, it doesn't have to be me just running all the meetings, but there were some that were carried over that needed to happen. It's just also getting into a groove of things. I think the other piece that we are really looking at this year in terms of all students is, number one, making sure that we're providing the appropriate amount of service time for students, and also looking at how can we better structure the days that we provide service so that maybe we can do PPTs for first grade on one day a week and PPTs for second grade another day of the week, just to make it more consistent. So we're playing with that a little bit, not really sure exactly what that's going to look like yet, and we have, we have IEPs to follow, right? So I'm not going to change this, change the schedule or change something that the student needs, but looking at moving forward, how can we kind of adjust to make it better for both the students, knowing which days they're coming, and also the staff, making sure that they're seeing all of their students and attending meetings. But it's a lot of meetings, but...
But you were able to start as the state wanted to, the shared, I know that was a question. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood.
No, 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 your question was...
So we actually started with just having the new system, and I was able to purchase back part of the old IEP system after a number of districts and some of my colleagues in other districts realized that there were significant glitches with the system, which we've just kind of rolled with. We are doing... we've just kind of rolled with. We are doing all of our review and revise IEPs in the old system until an annual. When an annual happens or a triennial review or a new referral, we're using the new system. And the reason we're doing that is it's just a lot upfront. So I feel like that's been a better way to ease all of us into the system, but there are still several issues, including technical ones that we have no control over. So, you know, we're doing our best to get everything out within the five days. There have been a few cases where we haven't, but it hasn't been for a reason that we haven't had our stuff done. It's been multiple names in the system or something won't finalize, some things like that. But the state is very aware of those pieces of it. So I feel like we're doing the best we can, and we just have to kind of know that we can only do what we can do.
Great, thank you. The other question was, when you get the numbers of the difference of the last year to this year of special education, can you put in the open choice children too, if there's any that are open choice that were new this year?
I can try without identifying students with confidentiality.
Gotcha, okay.
So there will be times where I may not be able to give you exactly, because if it's one in one grade level.
Of course.
I may inadvertently identify someone.
I'm just curious.
Right. I can, I can look at overall.
Overall.
I think I can, but it'll depend on how many to go from there.
Thank you.
All set, Brooke?
Yes.
Steven?
Great presentation. No questions.
Thank you. Erin?
Hi, I have two questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There was a, I saw recently in a news article that special, the rate of special ed had gone up to nineteen, sorry, 15.9. And it looks like with some quick math that we're around 13.7 or eight, thirteen. And so I'm just wondering, do you just think that's due to the district that we're in? Do you think that we're potentially under identifying? Or I'm just wondering where the discrepancy is between kind of the state's overall average and where we're at?
I am not sure that I can fully answer that. I can speculate just from the number of referrals in my previous district and here, that a lot more referrals have come in after COVID. And so that does change things a little bit. The instruction was different, and students didn't all learn to the same benchmark when they were at home. So I would expect to see some of that. I don't think that we are over identifying right now. I don't know what was done in the past because I wasn't here to know how that happened or what, what percentage. It was, it was in before, but that's something that we're very thoughtful about in terms of thinking about as we're identifying students, can we rule out a lack of instruction if it is looking at something like a learning disability? So I didn't actually, hadn't heard that it had gone up to 15%, but I'm not entirely shocked by that. And I think if we're around that 13%, that's probably about right for a lot of places right now.
Okay, perfect. And then my other question was, and you've kind of answered it, but I'm going to ask it anyways. I've heard a little bit that there was some concern about over identification due to how we were teaching phonics in the lower grades. And I'm just wondering if, if, and I know you're new here, so I'm, you know, I say this with a little bit of a grain of salt of whether you could assess this, but do you, between, and it's hard to differentiate between COVID, right, and our teaching instruction, but I'm wondering if you have any concerns about our phonics curriculum in the lower grade levels and it potentially resulting in additional referrals for special education?
I'm not sure that I could answer that today. I know that from what I've observed of the phonics lessons, they're happening in all of the classes across the grade levels. I can't speak to what happened previously, but I know that within the classroom, those kind of things are happening. I think that's something I'm happy to kind of observe some more when I am getting into, into classes, some more in the coming weeks. But I would actually have to kind of defer more to the literacy team in terms of that piece because I don't have a lot of the history of what was done in the past.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And my only question, Carrie, is, does this total number include children who receive speech services?
So this is students who are identified under IDEA. So if you receive speech services and you're under a 504, then it would not be included in that number. It could be a student who receives only speech and language under IDEA, so under special ed. So there are a handful of students who only get speech, but there also are a number of students who get speech under a 504 plan.
Thanks again so much for all of this information and for answering our questions. And we'll look forward to hearing more information as the year goes on in terms of special ed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, you want to finish up your report? Yes, thank you. Carrie, thank you. And I'm going to ask Carrie to be on hand should you have any questions after I talk about something right now. So as you know, each time we have a meeting, I share with you that we are still seeking additional para-educator positions. It's been very challenging to fill all of our open positions. We have a high turnover rate in the positions that we have. And again, this is not unique to Woodbridge. This is something that is occurring across Connecticut, and I'm quite certain is happening across the country. So we have not been able to hire for all the open para-educator positions, and we do not foresee being able to do so in the very near future. At this point in time, I am seriously considering utilizing some of the budgeted funds for para-educators to contract through Connecticut Behavior Health for two registered behavior technicians. They're called RBTs. This is similar to what I did in utilizing the intern open positions in order to bring on additional building subs to prevent having to have our specialists and other people go into the classrooms when we have staff who are out ill. So what I did there was budget neutral. We're watching that to make sure it stays budget neutral. We weren't able to fill all the intern positions, so we've increased the number of building subs we have. So in this case, I'm not looking to fill all of the open para-positions, but in conversations that I've been having with administration, if we could bring in two registered behavior technicians for the rest of the year, the money that we had budgeted previously for, for two para-positions for the entire year will fund those positions. We would not extend those positions out beyond the end of June. I am not looking for this to be a different model that we utilize in the district. I'm looking for it to be a way for us to get some support into our classrooms right now that our teachers need who have students receiving special services. So what we would do is we would have them come in for six hours a day for each student's school day for the rest of this current school year, for those two positions. They would be assigned to work in one of the special programs that Carrie was talking to you about. They are specifically trained, and this is what Carrie could speak to in greater depth than I'm able to, in the areas of behaviors with students. They go through extensive training in that area, and they are then certified or registered in order to be able to provide those services. It will be an opportunity for our BCBA to work with those individuals and provide some good modeling for our current staff in regard to what we might consider then training our para-educators for in the future. That if we wanted to take some of our current para-educators and train them to then become RBTs, that might be something that we would want to consider doing. So I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that it is something that unless we suddenly have seven people knocking on our door in the next week to become para-educators, that I am probably going to realign two of those positions for the rest of this year to become these RBT positions. So I don't know if you have any questions. And as I said, that's why I wanted Carrie to still be here in case it's a question she could answer. Currently, we contract through Connecticut Behavioral Health for our BCBA, so it would be through the same organization. Carrie had reached out and we had gotten some numbers and whether or not they had the availability to provide us with that kind of service. Any other questions, board members? Again, it would be budget neutral. Erin, Jay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Christine?
No.
Okay, perfect. So right now, I am going to call for a recess of the board for the purpose of a non-meeting to discuss the recently negotiated contract between the Woodbridge Board of Education and the Woodbridge Education Association. So those who are watching out in TV land, we will be taking a recess and we'll be back to continue with the agenda of the meeting. Thank you. And we are up to 3A2, Beecher Road School update, Mrs. Sherman.
Hi, Lisa. Let's see, how are we doing? Can everyone hear me? Thank you. Hi, everybody. So thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to share some quick updates with you. I want to start with a big thank you to our PTO who sponsored a really awesome picture day for our kids a couple of weeks ago. We had gorgeous weather. It happened outside. We were able to get class pictures for the first time in a few years. So we're really excited to see the results of those endeavors. And again, thank you to the PTO. They organized it and, you know, took care of the whole entire thing. And we had a number of volunteers that came to help us also. So thank you to all of them. I also want to say a thank you to our fire department. They came recently. And I also have to acknowledge Lola Johnson, who helped coordinate and organize this. They came recently to provide some fire safety tips to our youngest learners. The little kindergartners got their little fire safety hats and their fire booklets, and they got to learn all about fire safety from our Woodbridge Fire Department. So many thanks to them. I'm really excited to share with you that Jimmy, Carrie, and I have been meeting with the teachers for their goal meetings. You may remember that we do meet with teachers formally three times a year through the teacher evaluation process. And, you know, this time of the year, it's a really great opportunity just to connect with folks, find out how they're doing, talk about their year so far and their students, and really make some plans for the work that they're going to do moving forward together with us, supporting them and, you know, to support their students. So Jimmy, Carrie, and I have been engaging in that work and in those conversations. Along the same vein, conferences are coming up for parents. So this week is conferences. So I did send out a reminder that minimum days are tomorrow and Thursday for this week for parent-teacher conferences. It's a really great opportunity. I know you all know this, but it's a really great opportunity to find out how your child is doing so far, ask any questions you have, and just really connect with the teacher. I have one, one more quick story to share with you, and it happened today. And I'm sharing this story actually because, you know, I talk all the time about how lucky we are to work at Beecher and how amazing the children are. And there are moments that happen in a day where I just, I wish I could capture it and the community could be a part of it, and you can just see how awesome it is to work with these kids and to be in this space. So something happened today that I really wanted to share with all of you. So my, my principal's update is going to go a little bit longer to share this story with you. A student came to me today, and no one was really sure why she was coming to me. She just wanted to make an appointment with me and didn't communicate really what she wanted to talk about. So she showed up in my office, and she was clearly nervous. She was kind of like wringing her hands a little. And she said to me, you know, Mrs. Sherman, we have all these special holidays that we celebrate, and we have some special days off where we, you know, get to miss school and, but there are other holidays that we don't celebrate. And she said, you know, for example, Diwali is coming up, and I'm Indian and I celebrate Diwali. And, you know, I just, I want to make sure that we're including that. And I have some friends in my class, and I have, she said, I have two African-American kids in my class, and, and they celebrate some special holidays. And, you know, she basically was talking to me about like, how can we as a community make sure that we're being inclusive? And I, I mean, I wanted to hug this kid so bad because I was like, you are going to light the world on fire. Like I, and I told her that. I said, I'm so proud of you. And it was one of those moments that I was like, I just wish everybody out in the world can see how great these kids are and just see what they're doing and what they're learning and how they're, this was a little fourth grade friend sharing with me that the need to be inclusive and coming to me to problem solve that. So we talked together about some things that she would like me to do, and I made a promise to her that I would do those things. And then I went and visited her in her classroom later on in the day, and mostly because I wanted to let her know that she had been on my mind all day, and I had shared her story with a couple of different teachers in the building. And I walked into her classroom, and she was so happy to see me. Her face lit up. She had the biggest smile, and she dragged me over to see some of her friends in her classroom and was like, okay, tell Mrs. Sherman about your special holidays. And it was just really beautiful. And just, you know, it was one of those moments that I talk about sometimes in my principal's message, but, you know, I wanted to make sure that I shared it with the whole community because we're just really lucky to do the work that we do. And we have these kids who are lighting the world on fire. Like she's, this little girl is gonna welcome everybody into her life and, you know, let everybody know how important it is to be inclusive and welcoming and, you know, just embrace everybody. So I wanted to share that with you. Not quite a principal's update, but an important message, I think, from our children. So that's it for me. Any questions?
No problem. Thank you, Lisa. Any questions, comments from the board members? Great. Thank you so much. Moving on to 3B, upcoming meeting presentations. November's board meeting will include presentations on extended day guidelines and an update on the TAG program. Is there anything specific that board members would like to see in either of those presentations? If you think of something between now and probably two, two and a half weeks from now that you want included in those presentations? Perfect. That's the kind of things we need to know that can be included. Anything else? Thanks, Mike, for that. Okay. Again, if you think of anything, please email me or Christine, and we'll make sure that those things are included in the presentation. We're going to move on to committee reports, but before we do that, I'm going to take a minute to remind the committee chairs to review your list of committee priorities with your committee members and get that list back to me by next month so that we can have a working copy of our priorities. Curriculum Committee, Mike?
So.
I skipped C. Sorry, Mike. Sorry, Mike, I skipped C. Turned my page before. I should have, apparently. Jeff, Town Building Committee for Beecher Road School Capital Projects Update?
Yes, thank you. We actually met October 13th, 8:30 a.m. It was our second meeting. We started to get our bearings, which was great. We started to talk about the pools that needed repairs to the pool. We also started to formulate somewhat of a timeline, acknowledging some grant deadlines. So June 30th, we're looking for school construction grant funding, and that's 2023. And then December of 2023, we're looking for some state funding. And this is basically geared towards the roof. So we're looking to fast-track some other projects along, but to get the state money, looking probably a spring/summer 2024 start for the roof. looking probably a spring/summer 2024 start for the roof. We also met for a walk around on October 14th, that's the following day, after some heavy rains. So really got a firsthand, good bird's eye view of some repairs that are needed. Vito's team did an excellent job showing us all around, spent a good hour walking the exterior of the building. So we'll be pushing for an interior walkthrough too as well.
Great. Is there any questions board members have about the Town Building Committee meetings? I'll encourage the board to turn your attention to board, where you can read the meeting minutes from September 30th meeting, the October 13th meeting, and also you can view the meeting schedule through the end of December.
Yep. October 27th is our next meeting, 8:30 a.m., and they're open to public.
Are they here in person?
They are town hall in person and like.
It's a hybrid meeting.
Yeah, hybrid format.
So you can webex in.
From the town website, you can get the link.
Or call in via your telephone or go to town hall.
Sure. If anyone has trouble, you can just call me on my cell, too. I could, we'll patch it in some other way.
Can I ask one question?
Great. Mike, I'm sorry for before, but you're on now.
No problem.
Can I ask one question?
All right. So we met on October 6th, Thursday, at 4:00 p.m. We talked about two topics, two issues. One is, we've got an update on pre-algebra program, and the second was K through 3 reading. Regarding the first one, the first issue, pre-algebra, we learned that there is some potential misalignment between our placement of students in pre-algebra and what is required of students at the middle school at Amity for algebra. So there, for example, the benchmark assessment criterion is students need to meet at least, need to be at at least this 97th percentile, and here we require 95th percentile. So we think that there may be, is there an echo? Should I mute or?
Can we mute? No. Can we mute that one? It is muted.
Are folks online hearing an echo? Okay, all right. He said no. Okay, I thought. So we suspect that this miss, that some of this alignment is potentially leading to some students needing to, who are in pre-algebra at Beecher, needing to take pre-algebra again at Amity. So Christine and Lisa and other staff will be working on making that alignment stronger in hopes that we'll be able to reduce the number of students who are needing to take pre-algebra again in middle school. And then the second issue of K through 3 reading, we talked about a state policy called Right to Read that we need to be responsive to. This is a policy that requires us to adopt one of the state's identified evidence-based reading programs. So they've convened a committee of folks to evaluate reading programs for K through 3, and they developed a list of evidence-based reading programs. All districts will need to pick one of those, and our current reading, our current program, Readers Writers Workshop, is not on that list. So it means that we're either going to need to adopt another program or apply for a waiver, and we can, I believe, make an argument for the use of our current program in a way that it would be satisfactory for the state. So again, staff, Christine and other staff are in the process of thinking through how we will respond to this, to the state policy. And I think that's, oh, so the thing related to this is that we will, of course, if we do adopt a new program, a new approach, there will be some budget implications there. We're going to have to train staff, and this new approach in there will be materials and such also that will, that will be required.
Thank you, Mike. So Erin, I didn't see your hand for a question about the Building Committee, but I'm going to start with questions for Mike, and then we'll go back to you, I promise. Questions about Mike's curriculum committee report?
Do you know, do the teachers look at the state's other programs?
Did the teachers here look at them? I don't, I don't know. I don't know if they have.
So we just received the list on September 30th from the state, so they haven't had a chance, but that's one of the things, that if we decide to not go for the waiver and we were to decide to do that, we would have to start to vet the different programs to make a decision. So it's a very long process. That's why you would need the waiver. It's going to take at least 18 months to be in a position to adopt a new program.
Any other questions about the curriculum committee report? Jay? J, sorry, Jay.
So, Mike, I've got a question about the pre-algebra, just a general question.
Hold on. Can you, could you start over, Jay?
Sure, Mike. I've got a general question on the pre-algebra. So when students take, take the pre-algebra class at Beecher, does that automatically exempt them from the pre-algebra class in the middle school?
No, it doesn't. That was the other thing that we discussed. They would still need to place into algebra in middle school.
So I have a question, which may sound ridiculous, but we're saying a certain number of students will be taking pre-algebra twice.
Yeah.
And what fraction is that?
That's apparently, that's the case.
Do we know what fraction that is?
Do we, I don't remember the number offhand. Christine, do you remember?
Can I ask a different question then?
So last year was the first year that students had taken pre-algebra in grade six at Woodbridge. There were 13 students. Seven of them were eligible for algebra, and the rest were not.
We have a 50%.
But just to clarify a little further, the student will then still, even if they're successful in our pre-algebra, they still have to go through the placement test at Amity in order to take algebra. So we happen to know that some of our students were not eligible to even sit for that assessment prior to them taking pre-algebra. So we just need to do a better job in regard to communicating what the expectations are for the Amity courses in order to prepare our students here.
Thank you. That was the first question. And the second question is on the actual state policy. Maybe Christine can help me. When did we first hear about the change in the policy? Was it this year or was it a few years ago? Or did we have some lead time in the change, or is this all sudden?
Right to Read was passed in 2021, and the information, the state formed a committee who then began the process of having districts submit what their programs were, establishing the criteria that they would use to vet the programs, stating that the programs had to be evidence-based. So all that information has been shared for the past, I'd say, eight to nine months prior to this. The state then just shared on September 30th the programs that they approved. They were submitted at the end of May of 2022. They did the assessment during the summer, and they shared with us on September 30th which ones. Just to give you a little more information there, of the districts that were polled by CAPS, only 12 districts are currently using one of those programs. So again, this is not a situation where Woodbridge is alone.
Any other questions on curriculum? Okay, Erin, we'll go back to Building Committee. Question you had?
Yes. Jeff, I know it's not, oh wait. So I know it's not part of your mandate to talk about the fact that we are bursting at the seams and our enrollment is just going to increase, but it would seem remiss if we had a whole committee pulled together of town people and school people, and we just kind of hit our eyes to it and pretended that this issue wasn't coming. And so I'm wondering if there is any acknowledgement that in addition to our roof, which I appreciate needs to be fixed, we also do actually have to prepare for the fact that we are going to need to expand this building or do something else in order to meet the number of kids that will need to be educated within our community.
Thank you, Erin. I fully agree. That was actually brought up at our first meeting, and it will be continually brought up as well. That is definitely forefront on our mind, so we will continue to bring it up, and it was definitely spent some time on at our first meeting.
Anything else, Erin? Thank you. Moving on to 3E, Finance Committee. Jay?
Okay, so the Finance Committee met on October the 12th, 4:34 p.m., excuse me. And we went over the budget narrative, budget summary report, the budget detail report, and there's a combination of the financial report. We also looked at the proposed capital budget. This sort of goes to one of Erin's question, and so we looked at that, too. I'm going to pass it over to Donna Coonan, who's our Business Operations, Director of Business Operations. Donna's going to summarize, in essence, the key features from that meeting.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'll give you the top line on the Finance Committee meeting. For the September numbers, we're showing like a $42,000 surplus. As we talked about earlier, we do have some salary savings right now because of some unfilled positions. We also have some lines that are running at a deficit. Our professional services, we're going to have to have an extra audit this year because we met a certain threshold of grant expenditures that we don't normally meet, but with the COVID grants, we kind of hit that this year, so we're going to have an extra audit, as we will be talking about perhaps later in the meeting with the natural gas item. We're expecting our heating costs to go over a bit this year, and we have some extra transportation costs. So the net of all those things together, you know, we're looking close, but we're still about $42,000 to the good. Committee asked that maybe we take a little deeper dive next month on insurance, see how we're running this year. And we looked at the capital budget, and the committee made some recommendations that we kind of bring some of the expenses forward a few years. And we do show in the out years that, you know, to be determined, there's going to need to be some expenses for the reorganization or remodeling to make Beecher Road School accommodate, you know, maybe another 100 kids. So if any, if people have questions on the proposed capital improvement budget, you know, we can look at that.
I was just going to.
Any questions just in general about the Finance Committee report? Okay. Jay, go ahead.
So I just had one or two things to add. I think, Donna, thank you so much. Summarizing that, that was exactly the meeting that we went through. There was just one or two things that we talked about at the meeting. One of the things was what Erin raised. Christine Superintendent presented some data for us on how the enrollment would look by the end of, I believe, 2030. And that seemed to add an extra 100 students. And one of the questions we had was, was that unusual? And I guess it was, because many, many schools are seeing exactly the opposite trend. And so when it does come to budget time, we have to be a little aware that the town and us get together and understand that our school is growing. Most schools in our peer, at least our neighbors, may not be experiencing the same level of growth. There was also some discussion, Maria Madonic raised an excellent issue about maybe looking at savings across our whole Boa district, maybe reexamining some cost savings, some consolidation. And so I was going to make a proposal, and I'd get everybody to think about it before I make a motion at the next meeting. The proposal is that we set up two small subcommittees. One subcommittee would look at building expansion, and one subcommittee would look at cross-district savings and enhancements. I'm just going to drop that seed at the moment, and then maybe come back after we've received some feedback from board members and the community and make a formal proposal going forward. I think that's it, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. And I'm trying to stay healthy, please. We're going to move on to now the 24, 29 capital budgets. Donna, are you, are you going to be the one who talks about that?
I'm happy to, yeah. I don't think Finance Committee Chair has very much of his voice available tonight, so. Okay, so we don't have it up on the screen or anything, but if, if you guys clicked on your PDF from the board book or whatever. The district did a previous project in the 2011 timeframe, and I know just enough to be dangerous with some of this history, but I know Lynn can help us out, but that project was completed in around the 2016 timeframe, and those bonds are scheduled to be paid off in 2036. The town has said that they are desirous of doing a new project for Beecher Road School. Just as we've been talking about, you can see how we're going to perhaps grow to 950 kids by 2030, 2031. We're currently at like 43 sections of classrooms, and by that period of time, we'll need perhaps 50. So we need to think about, you know, in the next eight years or so, where are we going to put everyone? The capital improvement plan, some of the immediate things we're talking about is roof replacement on two sections of our roof, drainage issues. There was a Fuss and O'Neil report where some immediate things have already happened, but some of the outlying things that weren't as immediate are more immediate now, and those need to be looked at. We had a security audit, and there are some security upgrades that we're recommending be put into this program now. We'll make some technology and infrastructure upgrades. The parking lots and sidewalks, particularly up north, are pretty cracked and dangerous. And then, yes, as we were talking about, we want to examine in the future years our building and space usage. The roof and the security are the things that we are needing to move on in the next fiscal year. The roof replacement, what has been in the plan in the past was for a refurbishment of one section of the roof, the K wing, and then a replacement of the D wing. Now that we have entered into this plan to do the solar in the future, we probably need to be looking at doing replacement on both of those pieces of roof, or at least get some assurance that, you know, that the existing roof. that the existing roof will handle the solar for a good period of time. The district did put up and cumber some funds for a portion of Architect Services, which is one of the first steps in going through the Office of School Construction Grants to get a building plan underway where we could get reimbursement from the state, chip in maybe as much as 26% of a roof project for us. And so, yeah, we talked about the drainage issues. The previous plan had about $575,000 in there in the '25 fiscal year for drainage. But I think, yeah, we're looking at bringing those forward in both '24 and '25 if we can. Parking lots and sidewalks, which we talked about. And the school security upgrades. Some of those, we replaced our server that our cameras run off of. It was in a pretty sad state. And some of the oldest cameras have already been replaced. But we are looking to get funds in the capital budget to carry out the remaining phases of the security audit that the district did last year. And then the last page is kind of a grid which tells what projects and when we would like to do them. And then, as you'll notice, the out years, we put just some placeholder money for expansion or reorganization of the school. And one thing, you know, I don't have the roof going in '24. Just Jeff mentioned that roof supplies are, can be like running a year out right now. But, you know, the soonest that we could get that done, if we can get our application in by June, the state will say who's being awarded the projects by December. As soon as we can get that going, we'd love to do that. So any questions or come answer.
So I will go through the board and see if there are any questions or comments. Maria?
Thank you, Donna, for putting this together. I know it's always a challenge coming in and trying to learn all the history. And I think many of us sitting here feel the same way about learning that history, too. So I do like the idea of moving it forward, moving the numbers forward and then leaving a placeholder so we can continue talking about some expansion issues should we need them. So thank you very much for putting this together.
Thank you, Maria. Sarah Beth, any questions or comments?
I don't think, but thank you.
Jay? Okay.
Thank you, Donna. I think I could add, I think the state reimbursement is a stronger case for a full replacement than a restoration. So even more to go in that direction.
Thanks, Jeff.
But it's also important to keep in mind, if we do a project with the state for the roof, you know, we need to be strategic and not touch that part of the roof in any expansion that we do or you can risk having to give those funds back.
Excellent point. Blake, anything?
No, thank you, Donna. There's no question for me.
Brooke?
Just wondering, do we vote on a new school?
I agree. Stephen?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, it does, it does certainly raise the question if we have these projections that do Jay's suggestion earlier about kind of having two committees to explore what are possible has. Just knowing how long construction takes and having those in this system and with the pumping and everything that would need to happen in order to actually have additional space, we could be in a pretty dire situation in a few years and, you know, not, not be prepared to meet that for a long time. So the onus is really on us now to begin to seriously explore that, what may be needed.
Thank you. Go ahead, Maria.
To that point as well, there is additional on another level of state matching where if you collaborate with other districts, that percentage goes up and you get a higher reimbursement for projects. So it's something to think about as well.
Erin? Okay. All right, then I think we are ready to have a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-2029 capital projects as submitted? Jeff Hughes is making that motion and Jay is seconding it. This requires money, so I'm going to call for the vote. Maria?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brooke? Stephen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Marsha, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you to all of them, all of you. Now, our capital budget will be presented or sent over to the town. Will be sent to the town. And I believe there are some dates, either the end of November or the beginning of December, where we will present our capital budget to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen. Don't have the exact date yet. Policy Committee, Maria?
Thank you, Lynn. The Policy Committee met this month on October 4th. And we have two policies on 30-day review for you this evening. The first is our organizational chart, which falls under Policy 2120. So as you're reviewing this, I just want the board to note that the boxes that are in the dotted lines, those are the changes and this sort of brings us back into alignment with what we had done in a different organization that we had done in the past. So as you're reviewing that this month, I'll point you in that direction. And the second policy that we have discovered, that we talked about that's on 30-day review is Policy 4111. And this involves the recruitment and selection of administrative staff by the superintendent. The policy itself just has also a few language changes and some clarification. But what is brand new are the regulations and guidelines, 4111R, on the next page. And this is new and I want to thank Christine for helping to put this together. And this gives the superintendent some guidelines on how to conduct that search process and which stakeholders to involve at what level in this search process. And previously, we didn't have any guidelines or recommendations laid out for the superintendent. So this is something we kind of wanted to take a look at before we do have someone come into our district permanently. So have you take a look at it? These guidelines are brand new, so we welcome all of your input. If there's any language that we can clarify, if you find anything that you think needs to be changed or made different or clarified, please let us know as you're reviewing it. But this part is completely new and hopefully this will help set the guidelines for a more comprehensive process. The next meeting of the Policy Committee is going to be November 10th, on Thursday, at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions from the board on Policy Committee? Okay, I don't see any. Jay, Erin, no. Okay, great. Cable Easant report. Sarah Beth or Maria, anybody have anything?
Nothing new to report, but there are several of us going to the CAVE CAPS Conference in November. Sarah Beth Delpree will be our representative to the Delegate Assembly the evening before. And if you happen to look at your CAVE updates, they have added, some of the conferences that they have recently held are added to the library free of charge. So if you go back and wanted to look at, oh, I missed the parliamentary procedure one, et cetera, you can go back and click on it and watch it. So just so you know that that's there.
Thanks, Maria. And for those attending CAVE CAPS, don't forget to choose your workshops for what you will be attending. And if you could just share that information so that we can spread ourselves out and get more professional development to bring back to the board would be helpful. So I thank you for that. Moving on to the natural gas contract. I think that's you again, Donna.
Okay, so last week, the town voted to lock their natural gas rate for 30 months at $15.71 per unit. We have historically gone together with the town to make the rates a little better. It's a big increase. You know, we're currently paying $6.36, but the natural gas market is, you know, it's not good right now with the geopolitical issues in the world. Europe will be buying a lot of our natural gas this winter because they won't have availability from Russia. You can see that our rates have gone up from the chart I provided, you know, two and a half times in the last six months. And let's see. One thing that I didn't get right on the little staff report that I provided is if we do not lock this rate, I had indicated that maybe we could hang out a month or two and then decide. But our contract, our current contract is going to expire at the end of the month or within one month. And at that point, if we have not locked a new rate, we're going to have to float with the market for at least 12 months before we can lock again. So it's not a great position to be in. Some of the good things about locking are, you know, it's nice to know in terms of our budget. It's nice to know what we're going to pay. If, you know, if the rates do go down, they do allow you to then extend farther and then blend that lower rate with the current contract rate. They call that blend and extend. So it's just a little bit of protection. And, yeah, so I'm, yeah, just open it up to discussion or questions here.
Yep. I'm going to start by putting the motion on the table and then we'll have discussion on the motion so that everyone's clear. A move that we authorize the superintendent and the board designate to enter into a multi-year contract over the procurement of natural gas in conjunction with the town of Woodbridge. Do I have a second? Maria? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Maria Madonik. Now we're going to have discussion. So I'll start with you, Maria.
Sure, thank you. Donna, the blend and extend, does that mean that we wouldn't necessarily get that lower rate? We would get some kind of average of the two rates?
Exactly.
Okay, but I mean, the alternative is to be out on the open market.
But you're not stuck in the higher rate. You know, if two years in or whatever, we can, if the rate drops significantly, we can go out another year and then for that last year, we'll have the, like you said, the average or some sort of blend of those two rates.
Okay. How long would the new, does new contract take us? Like, how long would we be locked in?
The city did 30 months. You typically go 12, 24, or 36. We use a firm called Titan Energy of New England to sort of advise us on our utilities and they said they're really not even doing any 12 or 20 more four-month locks right now because they're just too expensive. So, yeah, so 30 is kind of an in-between two and three. It's kind of, I think, what the town decided to do and so.
Okay.
I think that's as good a strategy as.
And I agree. I think it would be helpful for budgeting to at least know that we're.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sarah Beth?
Is there an early termination fee if rates really significantly dropped and we could go to another company?
I don't think we can terminate. There are three companies that supply in Connecticut and Titan Energy. They do an RFP and they always get the best price from all three of those. And, you know, we currently get gas from two of them, you know, on a regular basis. So there isn't really another option that we would terminate the contract. We would just, our only option would really be if the price drops, to go out longer and then blend the higher and the lower rates together.
Okay. And there isn't like a cap option where you automatically would get that lower? Sometimes you have to pay a little extra, but you get that lower rate?
I don't think there is an option like that.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Jay?
Okay, Donna, Donna, I know we've been going back and forward on this. So I'm just going to go through some of the things that I've been thinking about. So the trend in natural gas prices, as Donna showed us, it's gone from about $3 to about $9, as you know. So the geopolitical situation doesn't help. The question now is, we're trying to forecast the future. I don't know anybody who's good at forecasting the future. What I'm seeing is the spot price currently is around 10. Donna could correct me, but it's around 10. Spot means what I'm buying it at now. The town has locked in to 30 months, you said, Donna, right?
Correct. Well, yes.
Yeah, so for me, if a 12-month lock should be cheaper. Because if you're taking a longer-term lock, you would get a more favorable rate, is my argument, than if you were taking a shorter-term lock. So I'd like to see why we, if we went for 12 months, why we would get the same lock. We should, I would argue, we should get a much better lock if we went for 12 months. Let's think about it. The volatility is eased off over a 30-month period rather than a 12-month period. And so I'd like to know why our price isn't down on a lock. I think a 30-month lock. Look, this is all geopolitical. So the question is, how quickly is it going to resolve itself? We don't know. So my biggest worry here would be I wouldn't want to go into a lock. But I did like what you said about the blended. I'd like to know more details about the blended. Does that rate occur? Is there a sort of a readjustment every three months, every six months? How does that readjustment work? Because I do like that Sarah Beth just mentioned, Maria just mentioned it. I do like that feature where we've got some downside protection. The other part of this is if we take a look at last year's cost for us was about $70,000. If I go back previous years and Donna, you sent me this information, it was about $110,000. My estimate is if we locked in now, we're looking at, am I close to saying $200,000 in a very, very quiet year? Last year was very, very warm relative to previous years. So we're looking at about $200,000. I'd say we under-budgeted this item by about $140,000 to $150,000. Would that be a good estimation here?
I was coming up with, you know, if you consider like the transmission and some of the other fees in our bills, not quite at 200, but yeah, I was coming up in 260, 270. I mean, 160, 170.
Thousand range.
Correct.
That's about $100,000 more than where we budgeted, right?
Well, for this year, we, we still have, you know, four months at the good rate. And so with coming up what's left and the previous administration did increase the budget somewhat. So I do think, depending upon the weather, obviously, we won't be, I don't think we'll be 60 or 70 over. But, yeah, we could be 40 or 50 or over budget this year. And then, yeah, we would need to budget the bigger number for next year.
Right, so the advantage of the lock is that we lock into the prices. Disadvantage is the prices could go down going forward. And so we get a blended rate, so we'd be paying more than what everybody else would on the spot market. Okay.
Right, but we also, you know... But we also, you know, I think they told us that in Massachusetts, they're already paying sixteen, eighteen dollars for a Decatherm or, so, you know, we'll we'll risk that, that if, you know, if we end up floating, we're we're going to, you know, obviously pay much higher than fifteen seventy. But from the short run, like you said, maybe in the first six, eight, nine months or whatever, till we get into the, it's a cold, cold part, we're going to be overpaying. But if you look, I kind of looked at our previous history and, you know, we're paying six now. But when we entered this contract, you know, it it's it's been a good deal for this past year, but the first year, the price was below six and we were paying six. So it probably, yeah, I think the 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 rate that they're quoting us is basically smoothing what they think is going to happen over the next thirty months.
Okay, thanks, Donna.
Jeff?
Um, no further questions. I would like to comment, too, we're dealing with an older building, so this reiterates our other conversation about what a new building would do for us, especially with rising energy costs. We're dealing with, you know, thirty to forty-year-old windows and doors and old insulation practices. So just to add to our conversation.
Another another point that I didn't necessarily know when I wrote the staff report was that, you know, the the town will be in a more difficult position if we don't go with them because the rates that they were quoted kind of assumes the two of us together. So they they will probably have to to relook at what they were quoted.
Mike? Mike, do you have any questions? Brooke?
Would you go with, you said it was Titan?
Titan, oh, we know, Titan is the consultant. We buy our gas from either Spark or Southern Connecticut Gas.
You just mentioned that it's kind of a two-for-deal. Budgeting, will they help out with the difference?
Don't know. I don't think they'll let us freeze.
Stephen?
Uh, fascinating and so relevant to all of us. Quick question, why thirty months versus twenty-four, eighteen or?
Right.
A different timeframe?
The, yeah, it's just kind of a little bit art, a little bit science. The twelve, according to the Titan gentleman that I've been speaking with, he he said that that they're not locking anybody at twelve or twenty-four because those are more expensive locks. I do take the point that that Jay mentioned, and I would like to, I will, I'll make a point to ask, you know, what that would be. I just took him at his word. But, yeah, so if they're not locking people at those shorter runs because they just feel it's too volatile or too expensive right now and just since we don't know what's going to happen, we don't necess, and we know it's really high, we didn't want to lock any longer than we needed to. So that was just sort of the happy medium that we that we came to.
Uh, just, we're going to let Erin go and then I'll come back to you. Erin? Erin has nothing. Sarah Beth, go ahead.
So we, do we have to pay Titan a fee for our brokering this for us?
Great question. Um, Titan is paid by the suppliers.
So if you went directly to the supplier, you wouldn't get a better rate? Because they have to pay Titan, so it's bundled, right?
Um, I'm, yeah, I don't know. I guess, I don't know the answer, but we've been in, we have had this relationship with Titan for years. And forty percent of the towns do, and I think there's something to those.
So what do the other sixty percent do?
Um, I don't know if they could, they go it alone, I guess. But there's something with that purchasing power of them bidding out these, you know, bigger contracts.
Just because we are a big school, so I feel like we're a big contract, so somebody should want us, right? So if we did contact F D G, we could see what they do.
We're a little school compared to.
Well, for an elementary school, we're dead, right?
Yeah, big school. But a little district.
It's the district would buy for all of the schools in the district.
So what do Orange and Bethany do?
They buy for all of the schools.
I know, but like, could we tell?
They have Titan as well. And so they are all extending, they're on the same thing. They're either extending or they're they're going it alone. And I know that, um, I don't want to misspeak, but but one of, somebody else in the vote at first said they weren't, but they came back and decided they better do something.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Go ahead, Jay. Hang on, hang on, Jay, let me put, okay, go ahead. You're muted, Jay.
Sarah Beth raises an interesting question. What Titan is is a consolidator. So what the consolidator does is they go out and buy large quantities of this. And so we don't have to get together as a group to have to do this. They do that for you and obviously they get a fee for that. But the interesting way it's set up is that the suppliers will give them the discount. And then they give us what the price that the suppliers send on to us. So this is a very competitive process in that sense. I'd just like to know how many people Titan are linked up with. I know gas is regional, so they'll probably only be with a few local suppliers. Uh, but I'd like to know how competitive that is. And I think Sarah Beth and Brooke raise a very interesting point, both of them. That are there alternatives here? I think we might want to have a quick look at whether we can go to somebody directly rather than go to the consolidator. Uh, but do we, are we in breach of contract if we do that? That's the other question with Titan.
I don't know the answer. I can do a little research. But I do think, I don't know how quickly the group could come back together or whatever. But if we if we don't do anything and we run out at the end of the month of our of our agreement, then we are going to float with the market for at least twelve months. And then.
Is there a reason why they won't lock us in at any other time? They only allow us to lock in at one time when the contract expires? Because I know I buy oil for lots of people and we, I can buy any time after the contract expires. So so that was something that puzzled me.
I guess I don't know enough, I'm not sophisticated enough with the with the with the energy market that I know why why that is. I was surprised to hear that 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 this is our, I guess, we, they want the commitment from us that, yeah, I'm not sure I can.
And and the last thing is, I've looked at, Donna, you've been excellent helping me understand this better. You've done a lot of work. So what I've looked at is, I've looked at distribution costs, et cetera, being a fixed cost. So like I said to you, the price per per, I use BTUs, it's the same thing, British thermal units. We've seen the price go from three to nine. And when I look at futures markets, they're saying they're going to be twelve to fifteen. So based on that information, I think a lock for twelve to twenty-four months makes sense. So if the town is locking at fifteen for thirty, I would think it's a little excessive. But it doesn't seem to be out of what the norm is out there, from what I'm seeing.
I don't know, we're going to vote.
Yeah.
I hope that helps.
So Christine has just pointed out that the town voted last Wednesday, the Board of Selectmen voted for the thirty months, Jay. Yeah.
Okay. That seems to be a reasonable, I'm worried because it's fifty percent higher than, you know, what the market is quoting me at at the moment. But I guess all the geopolitical risk and hard winters what's forecast, that's what I was looking at as well. Given those two together, we're better off being locked in than not. I'm just worried about the price. It's it's pretty high from what I'm seeing, but I guess that's what everybody's paying and that's what we've got to pay.
Yeah, there's just, it's not, it's, there's not a good, happy feeling answer to this situation, so, right.
The town has voted and our lock-in expires at the end of this month, is my understanding. If we do, if we do and we don't find another company, we can't, right, lock in for twelve months, right?
Yeah, Lynn, we're at a very difficult situation in that sense because we were paying six and change. Now we're paying fifteen. Uh, even this year's budget, I'm going to argue, is going to be hit significantly by this. Forget going forward. This year is going to be hit significantly by this. Now, I wanted to know, how much does the town you consume and how much do we consume? Are we the lion's share or is the town the lion's share? Does anybody know?
I don't know, but I I would guess that they have multiple buildings. You know, they must do the library, the firehouse, the center, the town hall. Police station is part of the center building.
And how did they come to that determination, the town? Donna, were you at that meeting or?
I just listened to it after the fact, but I did listen to their meeting.
And what was the rationale behind them locking in? Was it just from advice from the energy company?
Um, yeah, just, it's, the unknown, the things that we do know point to higher prices. And there's just something to be said for knowing, to having, to knowing what you're going to pay, even if it's not.
I agree. I agree. I agree with that side of it, but I also like the blended side where you can get a blended rate.
And we do have that, we do have that insurance that if, you know, if a year goes by and and we're wrong, they're going to let us combine that rate.
Okay, thanks, Donna. I think that's everything.
Seventy. I think it will, you'll be, we'll be, we'll be blending with the new rate of the market. It's not, it's not, it's not a something that's negotiated. But if, so if it, you know, if it ends up being eleven and we're at fifteen point seven, we go out another year, you know, they'll let us combine the two. You know, I don't know what length of time and what portion of what rate. But that is a common way to deal with with extending a contract and taking advantage of a lower price.
Anything else, board? Okay, then we will vote. Uh, the motion was to authorize the superintendent and or designate to enter into a multi-year contract for the procurement, excuse me, of natural gas in conjunction with the town of Woodbridge. Maria?
Uh, yes. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, but I also wanted to reiterate, sorry, there's a, there's an echo. Uh, to reiterate some of the concerns mentioned about our budget does not have a lot of wiggle room. So because this is benefiting both us and the town, it might be something that we need to go to the town for in the future.
Thank you. Sarah Beth?
So if we say yes, I'm sorry, that means we wouldn't, we wouldn't just look at any other sort of options, we would just be sticking with this. I'm going to vote no, I'd like to just have a little more time to, like, we have two weeks, why wouldn't we just explore something huge increase, so.
Okay. Um, Jay?
I'm going to say yes on this one. I'm concerned, it's just like, oops.
Could you start again, Jay? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, I'm going to vote yes on this. I am concerned about the increasing prices, but I'm sort of getting a little reassurance on the blending. I'd like to know more about that blending. I think this is a difficult decision for me, but in the whole, I'm into fixing rather than floating. Yes.
Thank you, Jay. Jeff?
Um, we're in the process of voting.
I don't know. The answer to that.
All right, I vote yes.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
Yes.
Brooke?
I'm going to vote no. Much like Sarah. Like to see what the, if there's another option for the two weeks.
Stephen?
I vote yes.
Erin?
I'm, can I just ask a question? Is is there, is twelve months an option? I can't ask a question, I just have to vote. Um, I mean, I guess I vote, I'll vote yes, but I agree with Maria that I think if this is going to, I'm concerned that this is happening in addition with the loss of our ESSR funds. And I'm worried that between the two of these things, we're looking at a a really hard budget next year where any kind of gains that we've made in terms of increasing staff is going to be. No, I'm going to vote no. I'm sorry, I think with a, I I would come back for an emergency meeting to to revote after, with addition, some additional information. I think it's worth taking a week, getting the more additional information, answering some of the questions that we have and coming back for an emergency meeting. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you, Erin. And I'm going to vote yes, reiterating the statements of Maria and Jay, those those concerns. So the motion carries six yes, three no. Thank you.
Lynn, I can I?
Questions?
Go ahead, Lynn. Can I ask a quick question?
I want to just ask perhaps, in discussing with, you know, when we talk to the first selectman or we talk to the Board of Selectmen and the liaisons or any collaboration with them, that if there's a decision coming up that benefits the town in that we all stay together, but has a huge impact like this, that we, that the, they reach out to us and we have some kind of collaboration or some kind of meeting to talk about how this impacts. I mean, they already voted on this, so it, you know, we're sort of carried with them with regards to energy. And I think that we should be, because our budgets are now so tight, we need more of a collaboration with them when it comes time to to make these decisions. Because then when it comes time for budgeting, we need that equal collaboration as well. So that's got to go both ways and it affects both of us. So I just wanted to say that.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Maria. Jay, go ahead.
So I'm going to just, um, say, sort of reiterate what Maria said again. I'm going to say it's so important, our, some of our aspects are so intertwined that it may have a small effect on the town, but a huge effect given our budget is set. And so, like I said to you, I'm estimating a significant increase on the energy costs. Not, I mean, this year, but going forward, as Erin is worried about. Where do you find that extra money from? And I think we're all in the same boat. We're trying not to affect or affect instruction while trying to eke out benefits from all the other areas. And this is like taking us in the opposite direction completely. Now, I understand this is exogenous. We can't, this is something we can't do anything about. Geopolitical risk, I couldn't, you know, take it into account and I wouldn't know it was going to increase three times. So this is something we just have to take on the chin. But at the same time, I understand everything Erin, Brooke and, um, uh, Mer, Erin, Erin, Brooke and Sarah Beth said about maybe looking into this a little more. And I know we agreed, but I I trust Donna and Christine will look into this deeply and try and get us the best contract possible.
Thank you, Jay.
Can I just ask one follow-up question? Do do the energy companies or districts report back over the tenure of our last cycle of our last contract to sort of compare? Because I'm just thinking, in terms of going forward, you know, given this change, it will just be helpful at the end of thirty months to sort of understand how we did relative to what we paid. Like, did we come out ahead? Did we come up behind? Did we break even?
Yeah.
Because that's going to, that will give us more knowledge to make or for whomever is on the board at that point to make that decision.
Good point, yeah. I I I will look into that of our last contract, how did we do? And then I guess just if you want to add on something nice, electricity is through the roof, too. And we are locked at a really great rate through twenty-four, at least for electricity, so. Well, one, one good, one good sign for tonight. So thanks for that little bright light. Yeah, no pun intended, yeah. Glad you got it, Christine.
I think, uh, Jay has his hand raised.
Jay, is your hand still up or?
No, I, I just wanted to say that that.
Alright, thank you.
That's a good point, Steve. Sorry. That was a good point, Stephen, because I think, um, Donna raised an interesting point. With electricity and gas, we've gotta think about this as a blending. We're saving on the electricity, but we're gonna have to pay more on the gas. So our ti- it's all about timing and being fortuitous here. And I think our timing was good on the electricity. We didn't know this was gonna happen. But on the gas, it, what has happened is happened and we can't change that, so in a way, we may wanna look at the blended cost for our overall heating and cooling costs over the year and see how that compares over time. Because you might be saving on one and losing on the other, but I think historicals are very important as well.
Thanks, Jay. Um, moving on, I, I think we're moving on. We're all set, board? Good. Uh, ratifying the W E A contract is, um, item four B. So. I am going to make a motion that we ratify the agreement between the Woodbridge Board of Education and the Woodbridge Education Association effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second? Maria? Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. I'm going to, uh, call the roll for the vote. Maria?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous, Marcia. The contract has been ratified and will be sent to the town or their thirty day review by the town. Okay, um, this is my public service announcement. Facilities Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday, November third at seven thirty A M. Maria already mentioned the Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday, November tenth at nine A M. The Curriculum Committee is scheduled to meet, is not scheduled to meet, I'm sorry, that was October. So we don't have a meeting till December of the Curriculum Committee, um, so my notes weren't corrected there. Um, the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, November fourteenth at four thirty, and our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Monday, November twenty-first at seven P M. Um, we'll move on. Is there any public comment? If public comment, raise your hand in participants list. I do not see any public comment. Um, so is there a motion to adjourn? Brooke is making the motion to adjourn. Sarah Beth is seconding that motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous, Marcia. I thank you all who have tuned in tonight to watch our proceedings. Marcia, as always, I thank you for hosting our meeting this evening. Have a good night.